I guess we'll call it over there. All those in favor? Motion fair, five nothing. Uh, what about it? In a second to that motion. One second then. Okay, we have Tia. Peter, did you accept?
No.
No?
What did I say? You said what? You don't mean vote?
No, I'm saying if you wanted to vote share.
I ain't, I'm not gonna change or anything.
Did you withdraw?
No.
No? Okay. Um... Actually, never had contested one of these before, so...
Well, yeah, we have a motion. You second it?
Second. Okay. All those in favor of Tia as vice chair? All those opposed? Any abstentions? Four zero one. Tia as the vice chair. Okay. Item number three, Rules and Procedures. Is this you, Joe?
This is.
Okay. Don't forget to turn on your mic.
I don't have a mic. Just go ahead.
You guys are real cool.
Uh, so basically, I just wanna make sure, as far as rules and procedures go for the board, um, for meetings, things like that, is there any opportunity to make any changes to the setup of the meetings?
Um, so it's been quite a while since I've been on the board. I know when I first came on the board, we had printed policy, rules and procedures picked out for us. If we could get a copy of the updated stuff, because we haven't got one since we made the military need policy change.
Okay.
And then we'll cir- if we could circle back on, after we take a look.
Okay, anything else on rules and procedures?
I have nothing.
Okay. So we'll just take a left though. Alright. Uh, post-election committee assignments. So, page six.
Yep, so I just wanna make a note on CIP. That's actually a function of the planning board and should not be listed under, as appointments for, before this law, because those are appointed by the planning board.
So I believe this becomes sort of a moot point, because we've, correct me if I'm wrong, how we, we canceled all additional meetings, correct?
As of right now, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. I would bet, yeah, we just...
Okay, alright. Um, so, in the, in the name of expediency, since it is the same board, does anybody wanna make any changes going forward to what committees they're serving on? Speak now. Sorry, Peter.
Peter first.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I no longer wanna serve on the energy committee. Um, I know I've accepted, uh, some public positions, but the board delegated me temporarily to handle at the same timeframe, and it'd be just a little bit too much for me to handle it, I think. I'm gonna be there.
Peter, do you wanna stay with us in, and once things calm down, then we'll have the opportunity to go back to that committee?
I would, I would, I would do that, yes.
Okay, do you wanna hold for now?
I, you can keep me on, uh, for now, but I can, I'm just telling you I won't be able to attend, because it's just too much. They meet the same night that everyone else, the other thing, in the same building, but it's just too much.
I serve and understand. Leon, you got a, you got a comment?
I just said, I'm happy with the way things are.
Okay. Um, content with committee alone, Tia?
Yeah.
Tia's content.
I can do that.
Okay. We have no, what is the official order on that, just the education of the public regarding committees? Why don't you explain exactly what the governor's order is, or the NHMA's guidance says about holding meetings? Which ones will still be held, which ones will not be held?
Sure. So, basically, any committee, the governor's advice we've been given so far is not having public meetings, with the exception of one that requires staff. Um, those specifically are gonna be the supportive selectmen, uh, the joint board, and the planning board, if they have any, so. Right now, they're recommending people can hold, have a meeting, try to do that, sort of stop any unnecessary meetings. But others, it's hoping the government has their opinion.
Mr. Chairman, yeah.
I think I'm gonna put my money where it's going.
Absolutely.
Mr. Devine, would that also improve the conservation commission to be able to be, it's a commission, and it's, uh,
It's awesome.
Probably equate with planning board, would I? I mean, it's just a question, not, not...
I would have to check into that. I don't, I don't believe there's any statute requirements as far as that goes. That would be my first question, so I can take a look at that.
I say, I'm not, I'm not really sure, but I just, I'll do it.
Yeah, but we're, we're limiting obviously any, any public cases that we have, as far as getting people together, and dealing with the various, um...
Andrew and Joe, in, in, because of the conservation, if there's some litigation that they have to process in order for some planning board to be, to be, to be held, would you have to, at that point?
At, at that point, we wouldn't do that.
Only if they had, for something that they had to, for... Okay, anything else? Yes. Okay, uh, hang on one, one second on that, Joe. I understand that we are now live on Facebook. Welcome, Facebook members. Uh, if you have questions that you wish to address through either Facebook or email, if you email the town administrator at hennecord.org, or if you make a comment, Lori will, you'll be, Lori, your comment will be read if it is relevant to the discussion at hand. We would ask you to refrain from just making general commentary, so that we can keep the mea- the meeting moving along. Um, as further, as things progress, we will also be installing, uh, internet capabilities down here, and we will also be moving our town stream's camera, so that we have a better picture. So this is just a very, uh, patchwork, but we thank the Marcos for assisting us with getting this up and running tonight, so thank you very much. And, uh, we just ask that you have some patience and bear with us, as we try and push, uh, government affairs out to the public as best we can. So, we also have some further news as guided by NHMA, and I will turn it over to Joe now.
Uh, so the board of selectmen, and then we've met, I just wanna know some different changes that you have in the town operations, because it's an opportunity to kind of discuss this tonight. Um, first off, the town office is going to be open for business, but it's gonna be closed for public visitation until further notice. Uh, but that means, on the front door, we're gonna have phone numbers for our contacts, our email addresses, so that they can get in touch after this. Um, there is something that we know that happens continually forward. Uh, today, the governor actually released, one of the big issues we're dealing with is new car registrations. How are we gonna deal with that? Uh, the governor's issued orders saying that all new car registrations, if you bought a car as of March first, I don't have to register now until April thirtieth, which gives a little bigger window, as opposed to twenty eighth, than you used to get on a new car. Um, so, effectively tomorrow morning, uh, the town hall will be open, uh, but closed for public visitations. If you need to make an appointment to come in and deal with something, the phone numbers are gonna be on the front door for all staff, email addresses, and we will, by case by case, try to deal with you, get you in, and deal with any problems that you might have. Um, we think it's important to keep that continuity and make sure the door is open as best as we can, so that we are continuing to operate well. Um, you may have seen, the library is closed at this point. Uh, we'll get further updates as soon as we know more about that. As far as the transfer station goes, while this is going on, we're gonna suspend all recycling. We're asking just to put the regular old waste together in bulky trash. Currently, our transfer station actually goes through and separates all of our recyclables. Um, the studies that we've seen shows that, um, the virus can live a plastic up to three days. We don't want our, our workers in there dealing with that. So for the time being, we're gonna just have all waste go into the general harbor. Uh, highway department, waste water facilities are also restricting all public access. If you need to get in touch with them, phone numbers and email addresses will also be there. Uh, police, fire, rescue are gonna continue to serve the residents at the business as usual basis. We do ask that people on non-emergent calls to a minimum, so they can vote this time to residents in need of any emergency services. And then again, as, uh, the chairman said, all non-mandatory committee meetings are hereby postponed, uh, with the meetings required, supportive selectmen, commanding the ZBA. And moving forward, all events that are hereby canceled, that's all three center in the range.
Now, Joe, that was a lot to digest. That'll be posted where?
This will go on Facebook tonight. It'll be on the town's website.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Joe? Okay. Uh, moving right along, we'll move on to item number five, which is a welfare lien. Joe?
Um, so, as Judy's here today, uh, representing this, uh, this is a property that has a welfare lien. Um, in your packet, you're gonna see it, essentially, there's eighteen thousand seven hundred eighty-four dollars worth of welfare liens placed on this property. Um, Judy's looking to purchase this property, so she's looking for the board of selectmen to, um, make an arrangement with her to rebate some of the welfare liens and make a payment of lien, is what she's looking to do.
Right.
So please come on up and speak directly in the microphone.
Um, what I'm asking, uh, the board to decide is, the woman doesn't live in town anymore, she moved to Pennsylvania. And if you saw the packet that I gave you, and the reserve plate, I mean, it, you know, it, it could pay, I gave her a thousand dollars at first, you know, like you do when you make a real estate transaction, to start the process on purchasing sales, really. She took that money, and then, um, about a few, like, months later, I, I wanted to move in, because I have a garden, garden company, and I was co-chairing with somebody in Western, and she was a gardener too, and I, I wanted my space. And she said, oh, that'd be fine, you know, you could move in early, so I did. All this time, she had been signing these liens for ten years, knowing, and I saw what the lien looks like, and every time she got money, it tells you that it's, you're taking money, and if you own property, it's a lien, that's your, your property. So she can say that she didn't know, but, I mean, she got the one how many times? Like, twenty? So, I feel that, and I don't know, you guys will be, because I actually saw the last group payment she made her, I have it right here. Um, I already knew there was a thousand dollars to buy the property, and she came and asked you guys for money to fix it up, and I had already said I was buying it. So now, I really feel like I should have to pay me her debt, you know, because I already given her extra money to clean out the property and move out, and I would like to win justice and just say, well, I gotta do, you gotta do, do, yeah. Because it goes all the way back ten years, you know? And I know, actually, the RSA says, uh, you only get six years, I guess, from, from today. But even going back, like, going back six years, with me just in, like, sixteen thousand dollars, there was a huge hole in the roof that I had to get fixed. And I spent a thousand dollars on the subject that she told me was flawed, and just, it got me fixed, you know? So, I, I don't, I'll, you know, I don't know, um... But you could also have, you know, you could have simple judgment against her, um, if you wanted to do that, because that's still an option for you, but... I would like to dismiss that if possible, or maybe you can negotiate something. But I'm not, you know, like I said, I have a lot of expenses if I stay there just to get it livable, you know, so I don't see the sky, remove the bathrooms. I don't know, uh, who decides that kind of thing? I can show you a paper, that, I went to, uh, registering deeds to see about the liens. Um, these are all, um, the lien amounts from two thousand fourteen to two thousand twenty. And the last three of them, one sixty, six oh four, and five eighty-six, she took after she had already taken my purchase of sale agreement. So, these were straight here, these were, I can remember checking, I have a copy that I can show you, on, on three one. So, I mean, that's rather, but...
So when were these taken? When were these taken? Three thirteen?
Just, just past.
Three thirteen?
I'm not doing that, you know, in much, when I was, I did, I was a year, I found this out. And every time I, the mortgage hunt, we like to clear the, to clear the lien so that I can buy it, they buy something else that shows that she never was holding it out. And of course, I was up again, and then mortgages have to be, you know, continued in four months, from the date of application to the time it closed, and that whole one was closed, because I had to reapply for another one, we had to find out, they found something else, you know? And I know the short sale guy tried to get in touch with you about how much money that, um, she owed the town, and, I guess, that never went anywhere. So he might hadn't prepared that budget without any, without any, um, you know, direction from you. But then again, being a professional, he should have known that the town always gets paid first, right? I mean, so, it's just a common barrier, the whole thing. So, I mean, I just didn't do that. And I don't buy it, and I can't, because of the lien, so, um, that's it. And if we're doing our price range, and, you know, it's hard to find something that's like that, every time.
Do you wanna talk about some of that?
So, just, yeah, briefly, um, Judy brought up an RSA, it's one sixty-five twenty-five is the RSA she's referencing. Um, specifically that states that actions by towns and cities to recover expenses before returned to its home, or bail the person, may be brought within six years after the cause or action occurred, and not afterward, uh, is, is what the RSA is stipulated. Um, if you read it though, you know, and it, it's kind of ambiguous. Um, it, it's more of a statute limitation, like, so what legal comes about, it's his interpretation. And it's to bring the action, which we did within a six years, so the six-year piece is a little, um, fuzzy.
Also, I, I don't get to mean, you could only go back six years, so it's not that much?
No, no. It, it gives us six years to bring the action forward.
Oh, okay.
And, and technically, if you read the welfare statute, we're not allowed to bring action on somebody if they're living in the house, in a single family, per one sixty-five twenty-eight, I believe it is.
Okay.
But, you know, and, and speaking to Judy, just, there's been a couple of different conversations that have happened. Um, Judy, at one point, um, asked me to, as, as the board to rebate the liens essentially, and then reeling the property in her name. Um, and then you have an email in your packet where she, she made an offer to the town to go back six years' worth of taxes, or worth, worth of welfare liens, I'm sorry, which is what, is reflecting the statute for it, it's essentially forty-five hundred dollars. Um, the offer that I got today was for two thousand dollars worth of welfare liens, um, that she was offering, because she had put a septic in recently, is what it said.
Right.
So that's, that's kind of where we're at, as far as she offers. Um, obviously, the town has not come back and made any offers, we've just been soliciting, getting them from her, and hasn't made any action.
Right. I mean, if you wanna do the two thousand, I'll, I'll vote for that, you can do it at closing, I'll get a bank check, like I said in my email, um, and then, they are to the town, you release the lien, it all happens at the same time, because he told me, Tom Gerard, the guy who's the short sale manager, he said not to do it, not to pay you now, or wait until the closing, when, you know, I'm gonna need it with, with my down payment anyway, so...
Leon?
My problem with this whole exercise is I believe the only real interest of the town has that property is the eighteen thousand dollars that's owed us.
Right.
The, the rest of the problems are between realtors, lawyers, and bankers. Uh, I think it's inappropriate for the town to come in and try to clean up the situation at any expense. I think we ought to just let the parties deal with the issues, get their lawyers involved, whatever it takes, get the bank involved, and if we can get some of our eighteen thousand dollars back, that'll be great. I think that's where our role will not be ending.
Peter?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm a little irked by this whole process. Uh, I've been trying to figure this out for a month, uh, and tonight, I thought maybe I had it figured out, and maybe we were gonna come to a conclusion, an agreement. But I'm really disappointed that, at the last minute, the offer on Mrs. Joseph's part here had changed, and as I understand it, it was last minute. That's not in good faith, I'm gonna tell you right now. This has been a mess.
Well, he didn't respond, he didn't, my forty-five hundred dollar offer, he didn't respond to that. So, in that vein, I figured, well, I'm, and that I have a subject, I have that extent with that, and...
Excuse me, but it just keeps going on and on. We'll have a zero offer by the end of the...
It's not my problem, sir.
Excuse me?
It's not even my debt. I didn't borrow money and say that I was a poor...
That's not our problem.
I know, I know.
You're bringing all this stuff before us, that's not our problem, and we have to represent the taxpayers. As Leon said, it's a matter of eighteen thousand. Boy, why get upset tonight, when I saw your offer of four thousand, get out of two, or whatever? That was really wrong in your mind. That's all I have to say.
Further questions from the board? Okay, um... What would the board like to do?
Prefer nothing. But we have to respond.
I think all this is for arbitration, which means I already changed us and come to a certain point, so I can move from another town.
Mr. Chairman, I, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I would be willing to follow that process if we had to.
Very good, and I believe Joe has some information on it.
So, again, that's our RSA one sixty-five twenty that she's referencing right now. I've settled the disputes, and it's very clear that, um, it's a voluntary arbitration session held at a time and place determined by the commissioner. It's voluntary, so the board does not have to act in that arbitration, it's completely up to the board if they so choose.
I thought if the person wasn't acting with the board's outcome, like they did...
And, and it's a voluntary decision, the board does not have to go forward with that. So, it's up to the board to decide if they wanna do that, for the arbitration.
If they want to.
If they want. Yep.
So it's not a dispute, there's no equity at all in the property?
There was none, no.
Further questions from the board?
But when Tom Gerard made up the, he, he, uh, a hundred fifteen thousand, he gave money to everyone she owed, leaving you guys out totally, and I called him on it, and he was like, well, he never got back to me about the amount. Doesn't matter, that was his responsibility to find out what it was before he started giving money out to credit card companies and all this other stuff that had put things on, on it also.
And then I give the money until the sale goes through?
Pardon me?
And then I give the money until the sale goes through?
Yes, right.
There's a lot of pieces of...
No one gives my money until the sale goes through, or won't go through unless the liens are done, which I was in good faith when, you know, when I gave her the money and thought it was, um, our good, you know, who represented her, and my realtor represented me, we all, it, none of our laws, Jews didn't mean everything this was gonna happen.
Well, not to you, but, you know, for that.
It's not, not, no, you see, on my part, it's whatever, no.
The pressure, okay?
No, I understand that you're in a tough predicament. Um, did you wanna say something, Heidi? Okay, uh, if the board is okay because of Heidi's credentials as a real estate agent, and just, in general, you, would you like to...
Is my name Heidi Hope Gray? Is there a lender involved in this, or is it a private lender?
Uh, for me? This is for the seller. The seller, um, they took over her mortgage and that short sale company, because there wasn't enough money for all the second mortgage she took out when the property was...
Municipal liens are supposed to be cleared. I don't know if that improves welfare liens, but it certainly does water.
Right, that's it, I know.
No, but I'm saying, you need to see some documentation from the short sale agent. You should see a preliminary document, to see if...
Oh, I have it, I gave you...
No, I'm talking about, right.
Your life, so you're right.
I would find out that lien has to be cleared, like other municipal liens. I can't, I'll steal and derring them, and back taxes, and clear them, but...
Right. Unfortunately, this is welfare.
Welfare liens do it, are different, of course.
They are different, that's hooked up with my question, there's obviously no back to me.
Okay. Thank you. Further questions from the board? Well, uh, I believe that it's incumbent upon the board to give guidance to, um, Ms. Judy, so, uh, what's the board's pleasure? Leon, you wanna read?
You could.
You're probably most versed in...
I move that we... That's right, wait a second. I move that we reject your request. And, after that second, uh, kind of, statement.
I'll second it.
Further discussion on the motion?
One of the problems that you face is that, in terms of the real estate world, you never should have moved into that property. You never, you were...
I should know that, I know.
And it's not the town's responsibility to bail you out. And that's, I, I'm sounding like I'm being mean.
No, it's just practical, yes, I understand that. So I do, I understand that, on, however... I can't, um, no, eighteen thousand dollars, it's not enough what she did to me, okay? But for me to pay that, it's just not right.
Then, I, so, I should also move to...
I am, well...
Mr. Chairman, this is out of line of having the continued discussion.
Yep.
From the petition here, we're in the middle of a motion discussion amongst the board only.
Oh, okay, so I shouldn't be talking, all right.
Uh, we have a motion made by Leon, seconded by Tia. Further discussion on the motion. Ready to call a vote? All those in favor of Leon's motion? Any opposed? Four to one.
Okay.
Okay?
I couldn't get in touch with Tom and ask him to give you all the figures for the short sale that, that he's, you, you haven't copied that?
Yes, we do, but I would coordinate everything through our town administrator.
Okay. What if we could come up with some money for you guys, from that?
I, I'm not gonna give you any guidance, you just, you need to talk with our town administrator and...
Okay. Because I was really disappointed that he just totally lucked it out, you know, because I knew this, when I realized what was gonna happen, I knew this was gonna happen.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along on the agenda, item number six is Central New Hampshire Special Operations Unit, Chief French.
So I did a map of the board, so I'm not gonna read it, uh, okay, I'm, I'll just give you a quick backstory. With the shooting incident we had back in, uh, February, one of the issues that we ran into was, um, due to what we believe was a location, um, well, it's not on, it's not on. Green light, so...
Just talking a little one here.
Yep. So one of the issues we ran into was the, uh, the, obviously, the, the size and scope of, of the incident that we had, and the reports that we had that the hostile shooter ended up on, uh, NEC campus. So during this timeframe, I requested a second special operations team. I had, um, state police SWAT team coming, and I was requesting a second team, so that we could set up, um, in two different buildings for, for a correct fact or response. What I ran into was that, because we're not part of the central team, there was a very long delay of about twenty-five minutes to get that team here. I had to go through state police, who had to go through their proper channels, and, and I totally understand their protocol, and, and I respect that. And, um, but it was a twenty-five minute delay to get that team here. So, even with that delay, the central team was still here and set up and ready to go at the same time as New Hampshire SWAT was. Um, the SWAT members are spread out more, where the central team is, is exactly that, they are the central team. The commander is Lieutenant Conker, the assistant commander is the Lieutenant in Bradford. So, having, um, a, a, for lack of a better term, a more centralized team to draw from, um, I think, a, a twenty-five minute delay of this kind of situation, or something like it, is just too much. So the, out of forty-six members, we had thirty-two members that responded to the call. What that gives us, um, was, in the beginning of the incident, if I can go back though, in the beginning of the incident, I started to send out, set up perimeters with my officers along with other officers from out of town and, uh, out of the area, so that when I would give direction of, go to this location, my officers knew exactly where they were going. So that when I would give direction of go to this location, my officers knew exactly where they were going, they would grab two other non-Henniker officers, and they were going set up. So by bringing in the central team, I can then pull our Hennecker people back in order to send them out on other areas where their direct knowledge is so important. Instead of trying to explain to someone from out of town, I need you to go sit by the cover bridge at Gilmore Hall. My officers know exactly where they're going. Whereas someone else would be like, wait, where am I going? How do I get there? Where do I park? What's around me? So getting on board with this team is going to help us in those ways. And then I listed off a whole bunch of, um, of other areas that I was not aware of, the advantages, if you will, of the team. By belonging to the team. So on the team, they have an emergency room doctor that is assigned just to the officers and the team itself. They also have a psychologist that's on the team. The, our duty officer would have direct contact with the commander or assistant commander in a call. So they would have the ability to make that phone call, explain to them what's going on, in order to start reacting to, uh, to come and help out. Um, like I said, otherwise it was, we have to go through the channels with state police. Uh, they also have drones. They have a drone, two drone certified officers. So if we ever had a missing person or an area that we can't really access, uh, they would come in and send the drone up and do the searching for us instead of us trying to get out in an area maybe we can't get into. The, they also would help us out if we had a large protest or got to bid some sort of riot. Um, if we knew ahead of time, obviously, we could just call them and say, hey, listen, we have a political rally, for example, and we're expecting problems, can you send us 10, 15, whatever we decide that we need? Um, so we would have that. The other issue that I ran into with the incident when I was at the command post, I don't have law enforcement personnel that I can draw on. Um, I was basically in there by myself, trying to make all the decisions, taking my own notes, and things like that. And in a case like this, they assign someone directly to the incident commander so that someone's taking their notes and you have a runner that's going and making these other, other, taking care of these other issues. Later on in the, in the call that we had, I pulled my sergeants back in and was able to do that, but that was hours later. That was probably three, four hours into the incident that I was able to do that. The, um, it also, because we didn't have, we were deploying every bit of law enforcement into the field for the incident, we didn't have much law enforcement around our command post to secure our command post. And in this situation, we were fine, but it's very possible that could be a major issue. And the last thing I'm going to do is pull people away from the hot zone, if you will, just to make sure that we're safe. But we also need that so we can all do our jobs in the, in the incident command. Uh, they also would send us up someone for defensive tactics and tactical response and training and firearms and all those other areas. We can draw upon those expertise at no additional cost. So the breakdown of the cost normally in cases like this is central team would bill out $5,000 for a call. We're not being billed that for our call, uh, because we went through the proper channels with state police. But if state police was not available for whatever reason, and we needed the central team, we would be billed that $5,000. Uh, normally it's, uh, $3,500 per year for the fee. Um, they will discount us by $500, so the fee's $3,000. The reason is that Officer Bossy is a negotiator on the team. We're the only town that has someone that is on the team, but we're not an active member of the, of the actual, of the unit. Um, when I took over as chief, Officer Bossy had been through the negotiator training already, and I had been approached by the commander at the time to bring her on board in that capacity. Um, so I, I agreed with it, they wanted her, um, and that's been a great help for her, um, she's been a great help for them. I think I hit upon all the, all the highlights. I think I hit on the highlights.
Okay, questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we enter into, um, or that the town Hennecker join the Central New Hampshire SOU team as presented.
We have a motion, and we have a second by Leon. Discussion on the motion.
I just wondered about training for joining that team.
Uh, there's an application process, they have to go psychological, physical, interview, it's pretty intense. Uh, last year, we had an opportunity to send two of our guys to a SWAT one level training in Hillsborough, was hosting. Um, it cost us their time, but it didn't cost us, um, other than ammunition, it's the only cost we had last year. So I have two guys already that have been through that initial part of the training, so I think that's going to really help them. They're going to have to go through it again to get certified with the central team. But they certainly have a leg up if those two are interested in joining the team. And the other piece of this is, I know back in December, came before you with the retention and recruitment and, um, wage changes and restructure. And I think this goes hand in hand with that in the sense that, um, this is going to make it more attractive for us if we're on a SWAT, special operations team, uh, and the retention level. There's two guys I know that are on the central team now, but they told me the reason why they stayed where they are is that they're opportunists to be on the central team. Otherwise, they would have left the agency a long time ago.
Peter?
Yes, Chief, I fully support your proposal, uh, as I do most of the proposals you bring before the board. My question is, and this is simply for the record here tonight, you, you do have the funds or will have the funds, uh, for this, to support this? I know it, you said $3,000, I know it's low. I just wanted to go on record that you're stating that you do have the funds or will have the funds for this.
If we have town meeting, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Further questions?
If we eventually do have the SWAT team back in Hennecker, would you really charge for it, for to apply to the team?
No, if we join the team, no, there's no fee after that. Just our annual dues.
Further questions? So mine always center around fiscal.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but logistically, why would it take 25 minutes for the SWAT team, for the state to be activated? Why, why was there such a delay there?
My guess is just their protocol, their chain of command, as best I can figure, and they were busy, and...
And where are they geographically located?
Everywhere.
Right.
So they come together?
Yeah.
So they could pull a member from Portsmouth, Nashville, Conker?
Exactly.
And, and they're not on duty to respond to time?
Right.
Okay. The follow-up question to that is, what is the difference between, I mean, this seems a little bit more organized, but what is the difference between this and mutual aid between Bradford, Hopkinton, or, uh, where? So how does it, I know that the equipment is probably a lot different, but how does it...
Yeah, the, the biggest piece is the equipment. They have much better gear, they have much better protective gear, um, and the train, level of training, um, is, is far above what the regular road officer gets.
Okay. How many? It says you have 46 members are in this? Uh, or no, 46 members, 46 police officers responded to the NEC incident?
We had 32 out of 46.
32 out of 46.
Mm-hmm.
So how many members make up the SOU team?
The, right now, there's 46 in that team.
Got it. All right, that, okay, thank you.
And everyone has a certain job, they're not all going through a door. You have folks that are the scribes, you have folks that are the logistics people, you have the drone operators. And so they all have very specific roles, obviously, someone with dual roles, roles. Um, some of them are the, that are supposed to go to the command post. Um, there are radio people and, and things like that. They're the, they're getting the blueprints, and they're telling you, yes, you have this in this building, you have this in this building, while the other guys are your tactical officers.
And prior to this NEC event, when was the last time we needed any sort of police action like this?
Five years, six years ago, we had a gentleman that was held up in the, uh, above the pharmacy building, and New Hampshire State SWAT came in for that.
Okay. Financially, would we be better served if we use this as an à la carte service rather than joining it? So that if we pay $5,000 every five years versus the money is every year?
I think with the, with the extra training that's there, and the extra, the ability to draw in them for the missing person, the search and rescues, the protest control, um, I, I think that far outweighs that savings. I hear what you're saying, where we're not using it that often, it definitely makes a savings there. But I think getting the rest of that stuff for a bonus part of that is where we really, really make up for it.
Okay.
And you're also drilling their active shooter protocol with going to college on a regular basis or on an annual basis at least, right?
We have that, yes.
Yeah, they could be part of that, so it's a, you know, there's a continuous flow. If you're short on personnel, um, that would be another avenue.
And I think it's a point to add, too, you know, these other services aren't services we've been utilizing because we haven't been a member. So to put a value on it, it's tough because we haven't had to reach out to them and say, hey, can we use you for crowd control in this event? Um, to bring in extra bodies, and I think that's really the key. If we have bodies in a disposal, instantaneously, if we need it.
Very good. Further questions?
How many of these, uh, state?
I don't know. I know there's a team on Seacoast, Manchester has their own, I believe Nashville has their own.
Yeah, I believe there's one in each county, if I'm correct.
Further questions? Not hearing any. Uh, we have a motion by Tia to approve, with a second by Leon. Ready to call the vote? All those in favor? Motion carries five dollars.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number seven, noise ordinance.
Joe? So I'm actually going to invite Chief French back up for this one, um, because we're kind of tag teaming this. Uh, I think, you know, right now, what we're really looking to do is get the board's support and moving forward and looking at the ordinance. Um, the chief has been getting some specific complaints as regards to target practice, target shooting in some of our areas. And I've been getting a lot of complaints specifically to dirt bikes in sand pits, from a noise standpoint. Um, and reviewing our noise ordinance, it hasn't been updated since 1993. Uh, and so I think, you know, Chief French and I want to look at some other towns, look at some other ordinances that are out there, to see if we can find one that better services the residents of Hennecker. Uh, I know, uh, the chief went through and looked at some of the noise ordinance complaints he's had over the past couple of years. I don't think there's been two too many, if I remember correctly.
It was difficult to, to track them, like, specifically, because they just come in as either, like, in, in the, in the case of the motorcycles, it could come in as an OHRB complaint, or it's coming in as noise. So it really depends on how it comes in. And if someone on Bennett Road is calling about OHRB noise, it's not showing up that it's the pit off of 114. Um, which is really, that's been the biggest complaint, and those folks, they're off of, um... Whatever the road is, I've drawn a blank right now.
Temple.
Thank you. Off Temple Road, um, are not very happy with us because we're not doing anything. And, and my stance is that the noise ordinance doesn't apply. We have a similar problem, where we have some people that do extensive target shooting in, in, in being gun person. Um, and I understand you like to go out and shoot, but there's folks that are talking about two and three and four hours of excessive gun, gun, gunshots, you know, um, during the day. I just think that's something that we're going to have to address, though. Just think, obviously, with the changes in the weather, we're going to start seeing that.
Currently, on the books, we have it set at a certain timeframe, right? Like, at, starting at such and such time in the evening until 6:00 or 7:00 o'clock in the morning. You know, noise is supposed to be restricted, but during the daytime hours, you know, especially since some of the shooting is going on private property.
Correct.
Homeowners.
Yeah.
Um, and some of the dirt bike activity is taking place in pits which are owned by the individuals.
Yeah, and people, we've gone in there and we check, make sure they all have permission, um, and we handle that part, but the noise piece, we, we just have no teeth on it.
But there's always going to be noise regardless, right?
Here. I would just caution, as we approach noise ordinance, that at least once in this town, but our current noise ordinance is that used, misused, to really cause a lot of trouble to an existing range. When, uh, that, uh, trap range was attacked by neighbors, and I, I like to pop a couple of cats in my backyard every once in a while. And a roof that comes out and shoots traps, and I would like to be able to continue that. And, uh, you know, one of my problems is that people who are opposed to firearms misuse things like the noise ordinance all the time, so as we... I'm not saying not have one, I'm just saying let's be real careful, let's really understand the opportunity for missing.
Fair points, Peter?
Yeah, it, you know, I got to warn you that, uh, this could be a bigger deal, bringing out people than if we were putting a gun on this together. I just went through this, uh, and Chief French, I think, knows about it. Uh, I think that the best solution tonight, the discussion, is to, by consensus, have Mr. Devine and Chief French look at reviewing and possibly, if there's any adjustments, to come in and we make it the first reading at the next meeting. And then we can go and evaluate whatever they recommend.
The only thing that I would possibly add to that is, is there, and I, I know it's in the draft format, but could we have the chief and the town administrator involve the ATV club? As well as, I don't know, what would be a representative shooting organization that could possibly weigh in, just to avoid it being hashed out at this level? It could be hashed out below.
I was suggesting an R.A.
So, uh, I think it's a duty of the town administrator and the police chief to initially bring in a first reading, and then, uh, we can involve other parties after that when we find out what their recommendations are.
I concur 100% with you, Peter, that I think that this would be a very long meeting. So I'm just trying to push it downstream as, as much as possible before it percolates up to...
It's as long as the chairman lets it get long.
Okay, Peter, you're cut off. Uh, okay, so what's the board's pleasure?
Yeah, I don't know if it's having the next meeting, it's going to be out of time, we're going to have to deal with the current, uh, beginning of it, because there are a lot of IRS, uh, noise out there, but it was just don't raise each other. So I didn't know what happened.
A future meeting, yes.
A future meeting.
And they can bring us a draft before...
They can bring us a draft before we have to make it a public reading, public area.
Okay. I think we're, you want to comment? I think you guys are good by consensus, what? Okey-dokey.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can't wait for that one.
You can pull this back to me, too? Okay, boy.
Item number eight, Mr. Acorn.
So I'm here to discuss the, uh, the idea of throwing out RFP regarding, uh, the Japanese knotweed and the spraying of which to control it. Not push it, but I mean, I don't have a pandemic or epidemic, but I do have a lot of knotweed growing around town and a spreader. And, um, what I'd like to do is that a, a yearly, uh, spray, uh, spraying program to knock it down. This spraying would take place typically in the month of September and October after the, uh, after the weed flowers. And, uh, would be one application a year. Uh, most areas will take two or three applications to eliminate it. It would be done per state permit and by a licensed contractor with a herbicide license.
So, does New Boston do anything down there right now?
I know not yet. But I'm sure you have your fair share of problems.
Uh, New Hampshire DOT is also doing this on a annual basis, and they do have specialists at the state level. Um, Central Regional Planning had a presentation and calling support for this.
The federal government currently and the Army Corps is, is spraying portions of their property at the same time, um, whereas, where it's inflicted.
Very good. Further... Very good. Further questions from the board? Somebody want to make a motion?
Peter, I agree, I moved and Leon seconded it.
Ready to call the vote? All those in favor? Motion carries five nothing. Okay. I've been a little bit remiss, so are there any comments that need to cycle back to any of the agenda items or any emails that've come in?
I have no emails that've come in, other than like...
No comments on, thank you, Lori. Okay. And finally, number nine is community center use.
So this, this was from last meeting. And I don't believe anybody's had the opportunity to really look at the community center committee at the whole, which was the original plan. So I would recommend that we move forward and just kind of wait on that until we have the opportunity to take a look at the community center committee at the whole.
Yeah, I'll make a motion, a motion to postpone the discussion.
You suspend and use the community center itself for this. We did.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I do not hear that motion.
I make a motion to postpone the discussion.
Did somebody second it?
Yes.
Leon, further discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries five nothing. Item number ten. Order of Selectmen Public Hearing and Selectmen Minutes. The draft minutes, February fourth, page sixteen in your package through page twenty... Page seventeen through twenty-seven. Wow.
So just on page eighteen, I want to clarify, so on paragraph one, two, three, four. Paragraph four, when I'm clarifying that we've made, make a note of Ms. O'Connor's statement wanting to swap shop reopen. I want to clarify that was, Ms. O'Con, I stated that Ms. O'Connor may make a statement again at town meeting regarding her.
Further edits. Further edits. Somebody want to make a motion on the February fourth minutes?
Move to accept.
There's seconds?
Correct.
Seconded by Chris. All those in favor? Motion to vote. All those in favor? Motion carries five nothing. Okay. Item ten, month of February twenty twenty, department reports.
Again, just wanted to make everybody aware that the departments have submitted reports for you, for you to look at so you can kind of get an idea of what's going on in the departments. Once things calm down, my hope is to start getting a department in every month to kind of verbalize their reports to you guys so that you have an idea of what's going on.
Very good. Item twelve, Town Administrator Report.
So the first thing I just wanted to update you guys, everybody on, is we're supposed to have a reevaluation. Obviously, twenty twenty is a reevaluation year for us for assessing purposes. We did have to postpone the reevaluation meeting due to town meeting any moves. So right now, we're waiting until after April eleventh to have that meeting for the reevaluation. We're getting close on time though. I spoke to the vendor this morning to be able to have the revaluation done this year. So it's, we really have to pay, pay attention to town meeting in April eleventh. And if we, for some reason, are not able to move forward with any, with that, we're going to have to really take a hard look at how we get this reevaluation done.
Well, we have time to do the process.
For?
But getting this figured out.
Correct. The, the issue we're running into is the contract that Zuzu had put out there, basically they were going to need April to September to get it done. Now we're pushing it out to May to October. If we have to go any further, we're getting into our tax time. We have to cut the tax bill, the issue we're running into. So again, for some reason, town meeting isn't able to happen in April eleventh. That's something we're going to have to look at as far as if we can appropriate the funds another way or if we have to reach out to DRA to see if we can get some sort of waiver to, to continue this on. And that'll be something we have to, we're drawn across at that time. The food pantry, I, I wanted to kind of start a conversation about this. I had a conversation with the director of the food pantry. She's looking to get Hennaker youth to move their equipment out of the storage that's downstairs at the range. So she has more room to put canned goods and things like that for the food pantry. She hasn't had a conversation with the Athletics Association yet to see if they'd be amenable to that. But it was a conversation she wanted to start and have. The other thing she's looking to do is have no parking signs put around the range because there's food trucks that have to unload and there are people parking up along the building. And as the trucks are coming in, they're not able to have their product unloaded. I did, I directed her first off to highway safety to talk about the signage, but I wanted to make you guys aware as well. The, the third issue that's come up with the food pantry is they've recently put a sign up. They've changed the sign that's located there. That building is considered as part of one of our historic district buildings and we need approval from the historic district before any signs can be put up. I have reached out to them. I'm waiting to hear back as far as the sign goes. But technically, they should have put out a sign for it, which would have triggered us to tell them to go to the historic district to get approval for the sign before the sign was ever put up. So I just wanted to make you aware of that.
Excuse me, Mr. Devine, they also made a town sign for a minute.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yep. I just wanted to pass along some, some good comments. Over the past month so far, we received three positive comments about Hennaker Highway Department. They're included in there. Just to give it a quick, quick highlight, Leo Coyn of Highway Department deserves recognition for the excellent way the gravel roads have been maintained this past year. Others, we know, who live on gravel roads are very, agree with this. And again, still very grateful for the road crew. We have it in town by far the best. So I just wanted to pass that on. I'm always good to hear nice things about departments. So... The next thing, currently, we have a deadline for tax exemptions at April fifteenth. Due to the current state of what's going on, I would recommend the board pushes that deadline to May fifteenth right now. Under RSA seventy-two thirty-three, there is an exemption that gives us to the ability to do that under DRA and BTLA rules. I also spoke to, to Cockery, who are obsessors who agree with making this move. So I'm looking for the board to authorize us to move the tax exemption deadline to April fifteenth to May fifteenth.
Do you guys have a sense of all that?
And then just to, obviously, with the state of what's going on, I just wonder, boy, I plan on having a meeting with the Hennaker restaurants to see if there's anything the town can do to help them. Right now, today, we posted on Facebook just trying to get people aware of what's out there, that who's open, who's not, so that they have phone numbers to do takeout, to get curbside, things like that. But, you know, I think the town should try to help any way we can, even if it's somebody who, and you reach out for landlords to make sure that we're trying to give them any assistance if they have to pay rent and they're not able to pay rent that much. Obviously, the governor has made an exemption for rent payments. But anyway, the town can do so, because now they can give the restaurants a little bit of... And then finally, I had Civic Plus, which is the website company, in last week. They gave me a quick demo of what the new website was capable of. It's pretty impressive. They're going to be in next week and we're going to start actually the layout plan for the new website.
Is the board going to be able to make suggestions on what needs to be added along with community members? I know Bill and Lori have made some suggestions and I, I think we need to involve some, some of the conversation.
I mean, if, if you want, we can start a subcommittee of some sort to get people together to look at that. That's up to the board if you'd like to do that. I have no problem with that.
Well, and we also need to start looking at the record, the record management side of the house.
And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Very thorough, as always. At this point in the evening, it's time for public comment number two. If there's any members of the audience who wish to address the board, please come on up to the podium.
I made a question to the representative, but back to that welfare meeting. Back to that welfare meeting, in my good eyes, it doesn't seem that that woman maybe has representation. And I would think any mortgage company wants to close the deal as much as anybody else and the negotiation shouldn't be at your table, which you denied it. But should be maybe in that case, there's some question there. I didn't feel it was appropriate that I go ask her if that's what you did want. And then the noise ordinance, I don't think everything fits in the same box. I've heard about that dirt bike thing, but, you know, maybe consideration to duration, decibels and regularity. I'm sure it will come up in other places. I mean, yes, we're all going to accept noise, but when things are continual and people can't live in peace, there's something else maybe that needs to be considered. And then just clarifications, was there something about, what did you say about tax bills?
So protecting that, for, for taxing, taxing also like...
Oh, taxes, yeah. With the billing itself?
The billing of the last year. Correct.
Anybody else for public forum? Okay, that concludes the pub...
Are we going to receive as, 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 for guidance regarding budget in the future?
Okay, not seeing any other public comment. That will close down the public section of the meeting and we will adjourn into non-public per RSA ninety-one A colon three, Roman numeral two, paragraph C. Peter?
Yes.
Leon?
Yes.
Yes.
Tia?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.